Welcoming everybody today to the Rare Disease Advisory Council of Connecticut meeting. We have an opportunity to have some colleagues here face to face at Borger Ingelheim Pharmaceuticals and a large number of colleagues joining us online. As I just mentioned, our current chair, Leslie Bennett, is planning to be here in person. She had to commute to get here today, so I hope she's making her way here safely. And when she arrives, then I think we can move the meeting into our regular order. But in the meantime, to make this the most effective, because we have a number of people here today, I suggest, as Michelle was mentioning, that we go into our public comment section and hear from a number of colleagues, including members of the Connecticut General Assembly, and then colleagues who represent various aspects of the healthcare business here in the state of Connecticut. One of the aspirations that we had for this meeting, really when we look across the rare disease landscape, is that there's truly a richness of talent and opportunity we feel here in the state of Connecticut. There's a number of companies that are heavily invested and dedicated towards transforming the lives of rare disease patients. And one of the things we want to do as the ARDAK is to try to bring these groups together, because we feel that our collective power can be maximized if we share our insights, share our common passion to serve some of the most underserved members of our communities. And that was one of the steps for today. I believe we have one more public meeting towards the end of the year, and then this should wrap up our candidacy in the landscape of the various aspects that go into the rare disease patient network in Connecticut. So with that, how about we get started? And Representative Steinberg, I believe you were going to start us off. The time was at 1:45, I believe, when we were going to get there. But would you like to, sir, take it away for us to start the discussion?
I guess I can roll the punches as well as anybody. First of all, I'm very gratified to be invited to join you today, to see that you are still very heartened and are at work in advancing the agenda, despite even a new set of challenges. You know, I've been getting excited lately. I keep hearing the word rare bandied about in the news. Unfortunately, they're always talking about rare earth metals, not rare diseases. And the main reason is there's money to be made out of rare earth metals, and that unfortunately still drives, particularly motivation for a lot of companies. But and then you layer on top of it the extra challenges going on in Washington where there seems to be virtually an anti-science movement to unravel many of the things that we put in place to help people with diseases and people who are vulnerable. And I just really feel like I can sympathize and commend you for staying strong in the face of what are new headwinds where R and D may be postponed or canceled altogether, that we're leading us on the path to solve some of these rare diseases. So the old adage is when you really can't necessarily do what you want to do, you put together a really good plan and you execute what you can execute. So some of the things that you're talking about, sort of improving opportunities for people in the workforce, and making sure that we do not create extra obstacles for those with rare diseases, and even in these challenging times, making sure we find the support services for patients and families such that they can ride out the tough times until things get a little bit more straightforward, or at least closer to the way things were when we were making some progress on so many of these diseases. Beyond that, I think as probably you are, I'm watching what transpires with great interest, maintaining hope that we will continue to be able to move forward on a lot of these things, and our good partners in the pharmaceutical industry, hopefully they remain committed to doing the right thing and finding answers, even if we have to jump a few extra hurdles right now to get to the same point. You know, I'd like to be able to offer a very positive note to the immediate future of rare diseases research, and I'm hoping you can give me additional reasons to be hopeful. But I do recognize that it hasn't gotten any easier, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Representative Steinberg, for your comments. Very much appreciated, and certainly resonates, I think, with members of the ARDAK. Thank you so much, and also for your agility to start the meeting, and slightly not the way we had envisioned. But thank you so much. Moving on, Representative Belinski, I see that you're online. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Absolutely. Love to. Thank you very much. Like Representative Steinberg, I am gratified and honored to be here with you. And I find the light at the end of the tunnel to be the, you know, the enthusiasm and the creativeness and the resourcefulness of this group, and the fact that we're reaching out to, you know, to the Connecticut companies that can help us in our search, because that's something that's definitely within our control at this point, is to keep the effort moving and keep the, you know, the solutions coming. And at some point, we will hopefully stumble onto something that is truly, truly a breakthrough and undeniable regardless of the hysteria and circus going on in Washington DC. So I'm much more enthusiastic and confident in the abilities of this group to keep moving forward than I am with trying to figure out the politics of shortsightedness, which is something that we shall persevere against. But thank you to all of the members of this group who do the heavy lifting, have the good ideas, because the families that need us to have good quality of life, they're depending on us. So I'm just very thankful for you and to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Representative Belinski, and thank you for your continued support. I know you've spoken at so many of our ARDAK meetings, and we really appreciate your unwavering support for this committee, and yeah, the important task that we have ahead of us to really care for these rare disease patients in interstate that desperately need our help. Thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Representative Mara, I see you online. Would you like to go next? Say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much for having me on. I'm happy to talk with you guys. And, you know, I have, I started my discussions with people in the rare disease community back when I first was elected. I had a constituent come to me with her son Charlie, who was diagnosed with Duchenne's muscular dystrophy. And lo and behold, Duchenne's is not on the newborn screening. And I know that certainly at the federal level, they're looking at putting it on, and we all realize that there are delays at times. But I have tried for, I've tried for a couple of years now to get Duchenne's muscular dystrophy added to the newborn screening here in Connecticut. And I guess, you know, I appreciate a lot of people saying, oh, you know, we have to wait until see what the federal government is doing. But I am truly disappointed with the state of Connecticut for not adding Duchenne's muscular dystrophy into the newborn screening. It is, it is an obvious step moving forward to diagnosing these kids at a young age. So I feel like so many times when we try to point fingers at other people, we need to stop and point fingers at ourselves and say, what can we do better? What makes sense for our community? So I come to you here to listen to the issues that you have and to make sure I understand when there's an issue that Connecticut can step forward and we can be leaders in this space, that we are doing that, that we consider that $600,000 over a two-year period to add Duchenne's to screening is a drop in the bucket, considering all the money we give to all the nonprofits that are out there. So I, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do here in Connecticut that can support research and development. I mean, obviously, we've, you know, discussed the tax credit and, you know, and that was in the budget. Certainly would have been something that I, it is something I support and would have supported had the budget not had a lot of other stuff in there that I couldn't support. But the cost of doing business here in Connecticut is high, and I think we all know that the cost of living is high. And Representative Steinberg and I sit on the Energy Committee, and we know that the cost of running a business is reliant on so many other things, like the energy that's used. So I will continue to look at kind of the holistic, the holistic areas in which it means to run a good business and to have research and development here in Connecticut. And I'm certainly, I'm not an activist. I am a representative, so it's my job to sit and listen and to understand where your all's issues are, and I will continue to do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Representative Mara, for your comments. And you certainly hit on a key topic that we as the ARDAK have been discussing a lot, which is expanding newborn screening. And we feel this is a legislative priority for this committee to try to bring aspects like Duchenne's muscular dystrophy, and so many others, you know, more than 7,000 distinct rare diseases, and the opportunity to bring this more closer to patients, be able to receive early diagnosis, and then enter them into the care stream that is most effective for them. So thank you for bringing up that topic. It's certainly a priority for us. Michelle, would you like to add anything to this? Because I know this is a topic that you're passionate about, as well as Emily, or any other members of the ARDAK?
Yeah, I think Adrian's on as well. So I think Adrian's, too. I mean, I think, you know, so I am a geneticist and very much involved with newborn screening with Adrian, and, you know, also collaborating with my CCMC colleagues on this. And I'm also the only, one of the handful of geneticists in the country that actually is part of an MDA clinic. So I see a lot of patients with Duchenne's. And so I think we all share the desire to expand newborn screening more. It's a matter, I think, so much for us about having the support, the money, Abe, to do it at the, at multiple levels. And then we really need like a newborn screening. Now that we don't have the RUSP, we probably need a Connecticut newborn screening committee to move these things through so we can help, so we can look at the data, make sure we are bringing the tests up appropriately from a logistics standpoint, from a technical standpoint, and that we have a stream to set out for taking care of these patients afterwards. So I look forward to collaborating with the legislatures, with my colleagues across the state, and with our state newborn screening lab to find ways to both afford this and make sure we have the money to do this, and also working together to stream the patients appropriately for care.
Thank you, Michelle. Adrian or Emily, any comments for you on this topic?
Do you want to go, Adrian? I guess I'll just say that I really think Craig, you and Michelle spoke so beautifully on the importance. I really just echo what you say. As a pediatric endocrinologist, it's key to what we do. And, you know, so it's always been very important to me. But I think, you know, now in this day and age, it's so incredibly important for us to do all we can to get the diseases on there that we need to. And what Representative Mara said, I wholeheartedly believe as well, every bit of what you said. You know, even as an endocrinologist, I focus on bone disease and see a tremendous number of Duchenne's patients. And, you know, I'm hoping for the best and that we can move things forward. And like what Michelle and Craig said, you know, it's very important to just keep moving on this and put a lot of backing behind it. I think a huge amount of progress is done, but a huge amount more can be done.
I'm going to say I do agree with Representative Mara. And as far as the newborn screening program is concerned, when there is, I do believe that we need codified, just like every other or most other states have, a an advisory committee that is made up of a panel that is set of representatives of the, a set panel that is made up of our specialists, of our people that will be looking over the disorders that we are going to be adding to or thinking of adding to the panel and making those decisions based on evidence to the panel. I do believe that DMD, MLD, those are both conditions that had an evidence review through the previous ACHDNC. Before that was dissolved, they both were put forth for comment through, I think, a federal register. They both have the possibility of being added to the RUSP by the Secretary of Health and Human Services. The RUSP still does exist. And I think they're both disorders that our, states are adding. I will say that they, our newborn screening program does not, it charges a fee. It is one of the lowest fees within the, within the country. That fee does not come back to the newborn screening program. It goes into the general fund. So adding disorders to the, to the panel requires money to increase what we do, right? So as we add disorders to our panel, we have to think about funding those disorders. An unfunded mandate does not do any of us any good. That, that does not allow us to expand our program. So if we're going to add disorders to the, to the panel, we need to add appropriate funding to go along with that, to support our growth. We have an excellent program. And I, I'm going to say that I'm biased, but we really do have an excellent program. I've been there 21 years. We've worked hard. We have an excellent team. We have excellent support. And within the state, we have a lot of support within the legislature. So all around, kudos to everybody. We really do have a wonderful program, and we've done an excellent job. But if we want to grow, that means that we do need the support to grow. DMD, we're for it if we have the support to grow. MLD, there is evidence there that we should be screening it, and we can do it. But we need the support to do it. And that's all I'm going to say about that. So, thank you.
Adrian, it's Leslie. I apologize, everybody. I got lost on my way. Don't laugh. So I apologize. But if the, if Secretary Kennedy signs both DMD and MLD, and they basically are part of the RUSP, do we have the funding to have them?
I think that pushes the the issue forward where we have to look at how that then happens.
Technically, they would still be, I mean, from what my understanding, they're the last two that could possibly still be considered on the RUSP. I was down in Washington last week, and technically, all the experts on this issue say that the RUSP, as we know it, is basically dead. That program that we had that was excellent, it's going to be reformed at some point, and there are a number of groups that are looking at this. You know, the American College of Genomics and Genetics, or Genetics and Genomics, has proposed a panel, the objection from patient groups around the countries, there are no patient representatives on it. And I think any group that would be in with those decisions on what we add to our state screening panel needs to include patients on this, or patient advocates, because we need to get that view. So that's my question. Technically, we are RUSP aligned. So if these were signed by Secretary Kennedy, would we be prepared to do them?
It would take some time, but we would, I think one would be, MLD would be faster than the, than DMD, but we would.
That's what I was figuring. It was a little nicer package between the two. And it looked like it would be fairly easy for you to add. That's my front of this laboratory, so I go get that. But yeah, that's what I was figuring.
Leslie, could we get you a little closer to a microphone? We can hear you, but you're not as loud as Craig.
That's the microphone there. Yeah, but you could try around the side there, too, Leslie.
I'm sorry.
Sometimes we just have to yell, like, thank you, Amelia. Thank you, Adrian. And thank you, Representative Mara, again, for bringing up an important topic for us and a priority for the ARDAK in terms of newborn screening. So thank you for that.
It's a huge priority for us, one of our major issues.
Yes, absolutely.
And I apologize again for being late. Can you still, can you hear me any better? Really? Okay. So this one's better. Thank you. So I, what have I missed?
So we started, so far, Representative Steinberg, Belinski, and Mara have spoken, which I believe is now concludes the CGA members. Good question.
This is Senator Harding. Yeah, sorry. I just got this up against the table.
The one I was talking to. You're more than welcome, please. We'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for having me here today. And thank you for all the work that you do across the state, and, you know, Dominic and your team. I've had an honor to meet with you and speak with you about the rare disease, the issues that are being faced by those that suffer from rare diseases, and in ways that we as a state legislature can do more to, to help those that may be in need. So very, always here to have a conversation, truly support your team's efforts, and look forward to helping you in the future sessions.
We look forward to all your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so shall we start the formal part of the meeting?
It's a good question, Leslie. How would you like to do? If we do go into our formal ARDAK business and then come back into the public comment section or keep going?
No, at this point, because we have a lot to discuss. And I'm glad you got the legislators in. I was hoping to move them forward in the meeting. So that was, because I think it's important we show that we get support from both sides of the aisle, and we include them in our conversations.
Absolutely.
Welcome, everybody. My name is Leslie Bennett, and I will start chairing this meeting. Again, I apologize for being late. I am the patient advocate for all diseases on the ARDAK. I was the parent of a child with rare metabolic disorder that was poorly defined. So I know that we have the undiagnosed moments. Michelle, are you online?
I am. I just need to unmute myself. I am Michelle Spencer-Manson. I am a clinical geneticist at Yale. I'm also the Associate Chief of Clinical Operations at Yale, and I am a healthcare representative.
Okay. Brad?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Craig Miller. I'm the Senior Director here at Borger Ingelheim Pharmaceuticals in the Immunology and Respiratory Disease Team, where I very much focus my research on rare disease drug discovery. I'm a member of the ARDAK and the ARDAK Executive Committee, representing the biopharmaceutical industry.
Emily?
Hi, I'm Emily Germaine Lee. I'm a physician scientist and a pediatric endocrinologist at UConn and Connecticut Children's, I'm sorry, and I'm the physician on the ARDAK who treats patients with rare disease.
I'm sorry. Mary, are you online?
I am, Leslie. Hi, Mary Caruso. I'm representing Patient Voice. I'm the mom of two adults with a rare progressive disorder called Friedrichsataxia.
Sarah?
Hi, my name is Saravedia. I'm part of ARDAK, and my son has a rare disease called hemophilia.
Gary?
I think you mentioned me.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Smart. I'm the interim executive director for the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Connecticut, and representing the Sickle Cell Warriors and the population throughout the state of Connecticut.
Delana's not here, I don't think.
No.
Have I missed anybody? Oh, Kevin. Oh, Kevin couldn't come today, if I remember. We're in the process, Kevin is in the process of stepping down, and he's asking the governor to replace him with Annie Daniel, who is the new medical director of neurologist disorders at Hospital for Special Care. And she will be filling, hopefully, she'll be filling in starting the next meeting as his replacement as the hospital representative on the ARDAK.
Leslie, are you able to speak up a little bit? You're still much quieter than Craig. I just want to make sure we can get every, everything you're saying.
All right, okay. You heard, did you catch that about Kevin and Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Okay.
And we still have three state representatives for introductions who are present. At least I think I saw Dorian as well.
Okay, who do we have?
Where is she?
Okay, the three, okay, that's what I was asking. Okay, Jim, are you on?
Yep, I'm right here. Jim Carson, representing the Connecticut Insurance Department. And I'm also a parent of my son has a rare condition.
Dorian, are you on?
I am. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dorian, representing the Department of Social Services, Dorian Long.
Adrian?
Hi, I'm Adrian Manning. I'm the Division Director for the Newborn Screening Program, and I'm representing DPH.
Thank you, everybody. Have I missed anybody?
That should be everyone who is an appointed member, Leslie. Thank you.
Do we have a forum?
We do.
Thank you. Then we can move on to the next issue. The next two issues are the fact that we, on the executive team, have two vacancies. One is, they were both basically positions that were technically up since we aligned. They were two-year positions on the executive team. One is for the patient representative, and the other is for the healthcare co-chair. The patient representative, I've talked to all the members of the patient group, and Sarah has volunteered to take this position. So is there anybody else who would like to fill it? If not, could I have a motion from somebody to take a vote on Sarah's candidacy and then?
I move that we take a vote on Sarah's candidacy for the executive team.
Can I get a second from somebody?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Is there anybody opposed? I would say the motion carries. Welcome, Sarah. We welcome you to the executive team. Moving on. Michelle's, unfortunately, Michelle's term ended technically with our last meeting. I apologize for all this missing. It was pointed out to me when I was talking after the last meeting. Michelle is the candidate. I don't think anybody else wants to take the position. If there's anybody else who does, please say now. If not, can I have a motion to, for, to take a vote on Michelle's candidacy?
I move that we vote on Michelle's candidacy for the co-chair.
Thank you, Greg. Can I get a second from somebody?
I'll second it, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. With that, can we take a vote? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Welcome, Michelle. I'm glad you're back. Because I'll be turning over chair and dukes to you in a moment.
And then were there any abstentions on either of those votes? I know we saw unanimous on everything.
I didn't, and I didn't hear any.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. So those both carry. We're going to move on, if that's okay with everybody else. We will have an advocacy and awareness update. If you don't mind, I'm going to shift and ask for the Awareness Committee update, and I'm going to call on one of the members here. Hugh, would you like to say a few words about what you and Colleen have been doing mostly?
Sure. I think we're, we set out to really map, you know, sort of the Connecticut landscape as it pertains to rare. So it's sort of an ongoing effort in listing So it's it's sort of an ongoing effort in uh listing all the groups, uh nonprofit groups, professional organizations and companies in the state, and positioning it sort of as the hub. It was really Dan's concept. Uh, Dan Donovan, we both are from Rare Life Solutions. But um, you know, we we've gotten various volunteers to step up and try to map it all out, at least in a smart sheet document. That's the beginning phases of it. So that's ongoing. Uh, it's obviously a big task, and we're getting volunteers, but at least it's initiated and the effort is to court sort of, you know, create a grid, um position Connecticut as the central uh place in in the whole Northeast corridor, quite honestly, between Washington and Maine, you know, and just all the different resources and how many of them reside here in Connecticut. So that's what we're setting up to do.
Yeah, Dan and I have been talking about this for years. Um, I have lists, extensive lists with patient groups, companies, research and clinics all around, and I've used them for years whenever we formed a coalition for advocacy. Um, what we did, and what I talked to Colleen and Hugh about, was we initially were going to map the all the companies, all the research and clinics and all the patient groups. And in talking to advocates around the country, they felt that was over ambitious. So what we recommended doing is just starting off mapping where all the patient groups are, because that will help all of us, but it will also help it be a great tool for dealing with legislators. Um, and um, letting them know when we can't tell them where any patient is, but we can show them where all patient groups are. So that's what we're doing. Colleen has and Hugh have done a fantastic job doing this. We're hoping that we might be able to roll this out in January, which would be great. So um, something to think about. Is there any other comments or questions about what the Awareness Committee is doing at the moment?
No, there's maybe just one comment from me at the beginning. I I kind of opened by by basically stating that what you just said in terms of the remarkable collection of resource and talent that we have here in Connecticut, really focused on rare disease, rare disease patients. It's truly tremendous, and I think this activity, it could be a monumental one, the catalog, the catalog and that resource.
If we can do the patients first
Yep.
and then move into like the companies and everything else, we could also use this to generate income. You know, for the potentially for the because we're looking about funding sources, this might be able to help us see that. So something for us to think about in the future. Um, so those those are all things, but they've been doing a wonderful job. The other thing that I talked to Colleen about is us developing a social media presence. So it's something for us all to think about, put your thinking caps on, and figure out how we can start to do this. Um. Because it would be nice if we could be up and 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 everybody aware. Other states are doing social media
Yep.
for for making more, for drawing more attention to their R-DAC. So it'd be great if we could do that as well. Any other comments about awareness or ideas? All right, then I will move on to advocacy. Um, since I'll be presenting and heard on this. Michelle, I'm gonna turn over chair duties to you. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um. Mary, do you have any anything to say or shall I just take up the advocacy? I know you weren't the best advocate.
Yeah, if you want to take it, Leslie, I missed the last meeting.
I, yeah, that's what I figured. Um, the advocacy subcommittee had a meeting with the CGA members for last last month. And the thing that we discussed were the carryover issues from the 2025 session, and those were the um newborn screening is one of the issues. We were concerned about what what's gonna happen now that the RUSP is effectively disbanded. Um, and then we talked about compassionate waivers and emergency protocols for rare disease patients. Um, we we brought this up last year. It was tabled for more information. Um, when I was down in Washington last week at the Nord Conference, it's a big issue, and there's several groups that are now starting to do this. Um, one of the things I would ask you all to look at is there's a nonprofit in Georgia that has Code Rare. It's a Code Rare program where they go in to start educating emergency personnel about making rare visible, making them aware that we have special needs, rather than just treating totally on symptoms that we need something a little bit more. And uh, there's also Danny's dose. If it's okay with everybody at our next meeting where we're focusing on patient groups and patient activities, I thought I would invite both of them to come and talk to us. Does that appeal to everybody? Um, before we go through and talk about the scheduling?
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay. Um, I understand that there's a lot of who are having problems figuring out what our priorities are. As far as I know, for 2026, we have not established those yet. We usually do that in December when we start preparing our um annual report from CGA. Uh, I was hoping, and that that's one of the reasons that I bring up the three issues that we talked about. I was hoping that we could take the 2025 carryover issues and and push those through to at least three of our priorities. I'm assuming that we will have others when we meet, when we finish with today. Um, I know there were some issues that some of that were brought up at um our last meeting with academics at um at University of Connecticut, and I'm sure that we'll have some issues. I know there's gonna be some coming up when our patient meeting, uh, because I've already been approached by some of the patient rates. So um if anything you can think about that would help, uh, you can give your input on possible potential issues to Mary or myself or anybody else who was part of the um advocacy subcommittee, because this is what we we start to do. We start to inform everybody about these things, but these are things, and we start early. For those of you who don't know, we start very early in the fall to talk to CGA members, because we need, if we're going to work on bills and we're going to push them to have a bill, an R-DAC bill for something, we have to start doing it now, because we'll have to get the language together by December, beginning of January. So any questions from anybody? The other thing that the that um we need to talk about is our webpage. Millia has informed me, and I'm sure she's informed a couple of others, um, the R-DAC that we um the Department of Public Health is now going to be modernizing its website, and she has offered to help us expand our webpage, possibly to a couple of the pages where we can start putting resources up. Millia? Can you comment?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, if you've visited the DPH website in the last couple of weeks, we have finally switched to the new platform that a lot of other state agencies are using. It's the same thing on the backend, but we have a lot more capability. Um, and so I don't know if this is a call to specific members or how the co-chairs want to handle this, but just for your information. Um, DPH is able to put resources, things other than just meeting minutes and agendas on your website, whatever you think would be most useful for patients, advocates, researchers, legislators visiting your webpage. Um, again, the R-DAC sits within DPH for administrative purposes only, but part of that administrative support that you can receive is making sure that your website is up to date, informational, it includes things that you want. So I don't know personally what you all want your website to look like. So basically, the way that I'm envisioning this is if someone is gonna volunteer, or if you want to make a committee, we can, you can meet with me, but basically what I need in terms of end product from members of the group is a like Word style document with all of the content you want. So if there are things you need uploaded, if you need a PDF uploaded, if you want links to other websites, just I need them all like hyperlinked in one document, and we can have this be an iterative process. I can publish it. I can show you all a preview. You can say, okay, I want to tweak this one thing. Okay, it's ready to be published, or okay, you know, a few months have passed. I want to add this item. Like, we can absolutely be working back and forth on the website. Um, but I just wanted to highlight that right now, the website is primarily just a description of the R-DAC and then meeting agendas and minutes. Um, but we can absolutely make sub-pages, we can make links, we can embed videos, we can put pictures. So really, um, there is a lot of capability there, and of course, it's state government, and I do have a lot of different priorities, but I want to help out your group as much as I can. So if you all are able to kind of compile what your vision is for the website, what you want on it, what sort of content, all of that sort of subject matter expertise, um, I can then work with one or a few of you, however you want to allocate it, to make that come to life.
Frankly, do you think that would be like an executive team?
Absolutely. I think we should start there as the executive team and then, and it fits into that social media presence that we've worked. The first step has to be that we have a functioning modern webpage uh that we can start to draw, you know, um um, rare disease patients there, advocacy groups, industry, et cetera. So I think, let's take that up as as the executive question. And then this also ties for me, Leslie, is additional executive action that we need to do around funding.
Yes.
And and also getting back with DPH in terms of the mechanisms for this, now that we can solicit funds, how how to do that, and then what would be our strategy next year? How would it fit into things in terms of building website uh or additional social media presence? And and so another exact topic that I think we need to.
Although those are all set topics that we'll be talking about. Um, Millia, is there, are there any restrictions on the the things that we can put up on our website? That's kind of one of the things we all should know about. Like, can we put up our legislative priorities for next year? Um, can we talk about bills that we're working on, or is that something that should be referred to our executive team, for instance?
Let me get back to you on that. Um, just because I think my one concern would be, given that the entire R-DAC membership includes representatives from state agencies, and so state agencies may not want to be advocating for something that has a cost attached to it. So it it could be something like, you could frame it like, you know, advocates that are, so it's like advocates of the R-DAC are working towards these things, but I don't know if every single one of your legislative priorities would be something that you could put as like, these are the R-DAC. So let's talk about it and work on that, and I will get back to you with more specifics.
Any questions from anybody else about it? Comments?
You know, I I have a follow-up question, because I've looked at it. It's um, it's not the most um aesthetically vibrant page right now. How much leeway do we have? Like, right now, it's just kind of like it's blue and white, and it just has kind of writing on it. How how much leeway, if any, do we have to um, change the aesthetic appearance of the page?
It's still gonna be blue and white, but you can add kind of like buttons, blocks, things like that. Unfortunately, the part of the governor's priority has been to kind of make the state agencies look uniform, so you can't really change the color, but there are certainly a lot of elements that we can add to make it more interesting.
I I'm more looking like visuals adding to it. The col- colors are fine. I mean, I I I've spent my entire life at blue and white schools, so I'm all about blue and white. Um, but uh, I I really, you know, particularly as you're looking at a young trying to bring in younger generations who are very visual, videos, charts and stuff like that, they're much less likely to read things that are longer. Um, can we add elements of that sort?
Let me find an example of like what some of these templates look like, but you could definitely have like, you know, three columns with an image and a little bit of text below it, and then another image. So I really need to source that content from you all, like what you want it to look like, if you have images. Um, but I think that I should be able to do that, should I get content from you all.
In in videos? Can we put videos on?
I can embed videos. I can't do, if it's like a Facebook video, I can't do that. Um, if you want me to post a video to the DPH YouTube and embed it, if you have a video that's already publicly accessible on YouTube or Vimeo, I can do that embed. Um, but yeah, I can't do, I can't post Facebook videos. I can't post Instagram videos. So it does have to be like in a public thing, like where you wouldn't where you don't have to like log in to view.
That's perfect. Thank you so much. That's helpful.
Seems like we probably just have to work through a lot of the details with Amelia, but I think that's good executive action for us.
Yes, happy to talk offline um and workshop specific things as you develop your vision.
Awesome. Thank you, Amelia.
Yeah, we have, we have, do have a logo, I think, for the Awareness Committee. Rare is everywhere.
Rare is everywhere.
That's what Colleen has been working on. Would that be possible to put it up on our site?
Probably.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I have one comment, one question, Gary. Uh, so with respect to the uh to that website, so if other websites, other committee members or on, or other folks wanted to 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 add on or have a link on to the um uh to that website, I know that it may be a little prohibitive because that link would go to other things within the website. So say, for instance, our own website, uh being able to direct uh have that link available to someone. Would you need to have that kind of cleaned up a little bit, or uh it'd have to be pre- previewed prior to being put on to the website? You understand my question?
Yeah, um, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, Millia, do you have any idea what we can link to? Are there limitations? Like, do we have to link to like CDC or NIH, something like that?
I don't have current like restrictions on those sorts of things, because basically this is like, we say at the top that, you know, DPH administers this committee. Are you asking like, what are you allowed, like on your R-DAC webpage, on the DPH website, what you can link to? Or are you talking about other websites linking back to the website?
So if we had a, if we had our own, I mean, we have our own website uh for Sickle Cell Disease, and I'm just trying to uh make sure that uh if we wanted more visibility, you know, through this uh through this uh committee and this organization, is there, is it a way to link our website to this organization, or would it be best for us to just link that website to our website?
I think you could do both. I might be, I might be missing the point, but like, we could put on the R-DAC, we could say, you know, here's an organization that's advocating for rare disease and put a link to your website. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be fine. I just wanted to make sure, because I know that you said that the state has some, you know, certain restrictions. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have uh because we have three social media sites that we also have on on our website.
Yes, based on what other working groups and advisory boards do, they absolutely link to external resources like that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Um, so we, uh, the newborn screening program has a page um up on the website. Uh, it's been updated. Uh, we're still updating it more. Um, and we have links to different, to our uh network uh page to different uh other uh pages that we um are linked with and and um it actually, it looks pretty good. Um, and you know, it's going really well. So um, if you want to take a look at that um and go through some of that, it'll give you an idea of what you can do. Um. It it is going really well. I mean, we've had, we've got videos that we're able to, um, you know, we're working with getting those up on our website. So it 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 looks good. Um, I think you'll like it.
We'll probably come to you for advice. No, your website was good. I I was very impressed, and and it's a good model for us to take a look at. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yep, we're still working out kinks, but we're trying our hardest.
You're doing a great job. We appreciate all the help. We really do. We, it's it's fantastic, and and thank you for all you're doing for us. We we sincerely appreciate it. Um, any comments, other comments from anybody, anything else that we should discuss in our business before we move forward? All right, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Craig, and he will start introducing all our public speakers. That's all right?
Yes, absolutely. So thank you, uh, thank you, Leslie. And yeah, but now let's move into the, we'll go back now to the uh the public comment section. And we have a variety of speakers today highlighting aspects of um industry, business in in Connecticut, focused on on rare disease. So how about if if I get started and and just spend a few moments, introduce Borger Ingelheim. Amelia, perhaps it's easier if you could pull up the slides for me, and then I'll just um.
Give me thirty seconds. I've got them right here. I just need to share my screen.
Or I can do it too, if I could ever figure it.
I think I can get it, because I've got the, I have them ready. Just give me one sec.
Awesome.
Can you see him?
Yes, indeed. So uh, thanks, Amelia, and and again, thank you for everybody for taking the time to be here today virtually and also um here in person. Just to say again, my name is Craig Miller. I'm a Senior Director here in the Immunology and Respiratory Disease uh Research Department at Borger Ingelheim Pharmaceuticals, and also a member of the Rare Disease Advisory Council of Connecticut as an executive member. Uh, so a little bit about Borger Ingelheim. So it's it's certainly a mouthful, so I know it's hard for people to say. So usually the first confrontation with the name, it it takes a few times to to get kind of right, but Amelia, if you go to the next slide, a bit about who who we are. Uh, we are a family-owned pharmaceutical company and the largest pharmaceutical company here in Connecticut. Worldwide, we have about fifty-four thousand uh employees, and here in the great state of Connecticut, we actually have our US headquarters as well as our US RD headquarters. There are two thousand um employees here, nine hundred of which are professional scientists, spread across our research and development organization, and a significant portion of which uh direct their time, their career, and their passion in towards finding uh transformative therapies for rare disease patients. Go to the next slide for me, uh, Amelia. So where do we spend our time now in, in, in research and development? We're really divided along therapeutic areas and each one of these therapeutic areas has a global footprint. We work in oncology, uh, mental health, cardio renal metabolic diseases, immunology and respiratory disease. That's where I call home and also I health. And throughout these very various therapeutic areas, there's a kaleidoscope of rare disease activities ongoing, including, uh, rare, de-differentiated liposarcomas and oncology, schizophrenia and mental health, a whole host of rare diseases and immunology and respiratory disease, which, which I'll speak to, uh, a bit later. So really a, a, a real commitment to trying to identify transformative therapies for these patients across the various levels of research that we are engaged in. Amelia, if you could go to the next slide. And it's shown here is, is really what we do. And, and what we do is follow the science and, and put the patient truly at the center of everything that we do. This has allowed us to deliver a, a robust clinical pipeline of which we have 25 distinct molecular entities in our development and clinical stages, a portion of which are directed towards, uh, rare disease therapies. And a topic over to the right that I really want to highlight is, is the power of partnership, which is really been the theme of today's meeting. The power that we all have collectively together to, to address rare disease patient needs. And with Borger, we have 150, uh, joint projects that we're engaged with in the external environment, um, worldwide. And all this coming together, directed towards serving the patient and following the signs. Next slide, Amelia. And then to build on that, um, aspect of external partnership and collaboration. In fact, 50% of our pipeline, uh, that we have delivered is, is anchored on external innovation. So it's essential that innovation doesn't just happen here in the walls of, uh, Borger Ingelheim, but it's in the broader community. And later today, uh, my colleague, um, Dr. Priyant Patel will speak a bit about how we're harnessing really some cutting edge technologies and partnering with institutions worldwide, but also here in the state of Connecticut and some excellent work that we're doing with Yale, uh, School of Medicine in terms of trying to find and understand disease pathogenic drivers and systemic sclerosis, which is a, a, a rare disease and one in which we've invested a number of years to really try to pioneer new insights and, and to develop novel therapies, um, for these patients. And an important thing that I'm also very proud about, um, in terms of Borger Ingelheim is the substantial reinvestment that we made into R and D. So last, uh, year, about 28% of our net sales was redirected back into the R and D community in order for us to fund and to deliver the type of research, the type of pioneer insights to then, uh, develop and discover these transformative medicines, uh, for patients. It allows us to do durable science, the science that's really takes to, to, um, address rare disease patient needs and beyond. As you move to the next slide, uh, Amelia. Just a bit about now diving into where I spend my time in the Immunology and Respiratory, uh, Disease, um, Research Team, where we do have a rich legacy of bringing innovation for patients with rare disease. Uh, for those, uh, maybe following the news, just two weeks ago, um, the FDA approved Narodolast, uh, for the treatment of idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis. For those of you who don't know about idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, it's a rare disease, uh, characterized by, um, scarring, uh, fibrosis in the lung leads to dyspnea. And unfortunately, the median survival is between two to three years for these patients with this disease. Very happy to see this is the first treatment actually approved for IPF in, in almost a decade. So I think here an example of bringing value, um, to patients suffering from this rare disease. Also, an area that we're incredibly proud about is in 2023, we were awarded the, uh, Pre-Gaviant Prize for the Best Product in the Rare Orphan Disease Space for Spazolamab. This is an anti IL-36 monoclonal antibody approved for the treatment of generalized pustular psoriasis or GPP. Uh, for those of you who don't know about GPP, it's probably not surprising as this is an ultra rare disease. So incredibly rare. It manifests in terms of systemic inflammation and the formation of inflammatory pustules and associated with a number of comorbidities and, and mortality. And we were very, um, honored to be recognized in terms of the innovation of Spazolamab, uh, and, and the value that it's brought, uh, for patients. But that's the past. Uh, and as I was saying, in the immunology and rare, um, immunology and respiratory disease team are focused on the future and continuing to address, uh, rare disease patient needs. Amelia, if you go to the next slide. The show in here that we work across four, um, uh, specialty care areas of pulmonology, rheumatology, gastroenterology and dermatology. And scattered within all these are rare disease that we aspire to, to treat, including idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, as I already mentioned, sarcoidosis, systemic sclerosis, dermatomyositis, um, vitiligo, uh, and, and many others. So we really have a strong, uh, imprint across these areas, um, really focused on doing this durable research to address patient needs. And Amelia, if you just go to the last slide, I won't spend too much longer on this, but just to say that this is what we, we strive to do, our purpose, why we exist here at Borger Ingelheim. And that's to transform, um, the lives, uh, for generations. So we look to not just move the patient for today, but really to substantially inflect their trajectory, uh, and it's through harnessing these partnerships, harnessing this external ecosystem that gives us the, the opportunity to truly, uh, deliver on their needs. So that's a bit of Borger Ingelheim. I'll pause here in case there's any questions, um, from the audience before we move on to our next speaker. Nope. Awesome. So how about if we move on, uh, the next, uh, Carrie? Thado, are you online from, um, uh, Rare and Ready? Would you like to take the stage?
Hi, everyone. I would like to take the stage so much. Thank you. Um, my name is Carrie Lotto. I am with the Rare and Ready Coalition. So thank you so much, Leslie, for the invite to speak to the group today. I do have some slides that I will share. Great. And just listening to the conversation today, this is definitely an ARDA that is very well organized, um, and, and knows the issues. Um, so I'm going to do some high level on some of these things, but, uh, just briefly to tell you a little bit about the Rare and Ready Coalition. Uh, we were established in January of 2022. Um, rare disease entered my life in 2008, um, and I've been part of the community since then. And I formed the Rare and Ready Coalition really to focus on state specific issues. Uh, being, you know, members of NORD and Everylife Foundation, I certainly saw, um, the great job they were doing. But I really wanted to break down some silos and bring all sorts of rare disease nonprofit organizations together to educate, to train, to provide them tools and resources needed to be effective advocates and allow us to mobilize really quickly when state issues pop up. Um, it sounds like you are all on the call are very astute to legislative processes and you, and you know that sometimes a hearing, we have, you know, 24 hours notice to get advocates at a hearing. So this was really my goal in establishing Rare and Ready is to make sure that these advocates can mobilize quickly in each of the states. Um, and so at this point, we have 110 nonprofit members. There is no fee to join Rare and Ready. Um, and we have sent 75 individual members and some of those members are members of a newborn screening lab. Um, they're geneticists, they're healthcare providers that aren't necessarily in an organization, but want to be effective advocates in their state. So that's a little bit about the coalition. Um, one thing that I know is on everybody's mind here in the rare disease community is the big beautiful bill and the Medicaid impact, uh, the Medicaid cuts and how that impacts the rare disease community. So just speaking very high level because I think we're all sort of on our toes as the details, you know, try to shake themselves out over the next several months to a year. Um, but some of the big things that we're looking at here at Rare and Ready is, of course, the, um, the federal work reporting rules of 80 hours of worker volunteering. Um, NORD warns us that this could really strip away coverage of close to 13 million Americans simply because of paperwork issues or they're not able to prove their hours. And there's really not at this point, any, um, guidance on what that proving your hours looks like. So again, we're just waiting for, to see how the states come down on that. Of course, you all know about the six month re-enrollment. I've learned from several state Medicaids that they don't even have the infrastructure, the staff or the resources for this every six months. Um, so we're keeping an eye on that. One thing that, that we all know is being members of the rare disease community is that we often, um, uh, rely on those special waiver programs or those optional benefits. And we really fear that those are going to be the first on the chopping block when it comes to Medicaid cuts. Many of our families depend on home care. Um, and so we will be fighting back as a coalition if we do see cuts to those programs. Um, and then of course Kaiser Family Foundation expects about 10 million, um, folks to lose coverage by 2034 due to this bill. So part of the Rare and Ready Coalition, we focus on a lot of state issues, all around access. But this Medicaid access is very important to us. So we'll be keeping an eye on this. We'll be working with our partners, um, our national partners to, to ensure that we can protect the community. So I wanted to dive a little bit into what are at the Rare and Ready, what our priorities are and what we look at when it comes to state specific legislation. Um, so I love this earlier diagnosis, access to treatments and hear the rare voice because I think in my opinion, it all sort of feeds into each other. So of course, uh, the beginning of the call, we talked about newborn screening, very important to Rare and Ready. We do not want to wait and see what happens on the federal side. We want to start, um, you know, holding states accountable and providing those resources and providing those funds to ensure that, that we can expand our newborn screening. Of course, we have rapid whole genome sequencing and all the great things when it comes to that technology. Biomarker testing coverage is important to us. Um, co-pay accumulator bands, prior authorization, out of network coverage, out of state coverage. And then we really think there need to be pa- patient advocates on these drug utilization boards and pharmacy and therapeutic committees. So I wanted just briefly go through some definitions and acronyms just to make sure we're all on a level playing field here before I dive, uh, any deeper into this. So newborn screening, we typically, um, use NBS as the acronym. Everyone on this call knows what the RUSP is. Uh, this rapid whole genome sequencing is this fast genetic test that really has been used, um, when it comes to critically ill infants or urgent medical care to help identify and treat. Um, so coverage to rapid whole genome sequencing is a priority of ours. Um, co-pay accumulator ban, if you're not familiar with this practice, it's a health insurance practice where they don't count manufacturer co-pay assistance toward a patient's deductible. So we want to ensure that it does count. Biomarker testing coverage, BTC, um, again, used to identify genetic markers to guide diagnosis and treatment. Out of network coverage as rare disease, uh, you know, patients or caregivers, we certainly realize that many of our specialists aren't even in our state, especially if you live in a smaller state. So we believe that there should be legislation, um, allowing rare disease patients to have out of network coverage so they can access their specialists. Um, prior authorization or what we call PA reform is just simplifying those health insurance, uh, practices so we can access our medications quicker, um, and break down some of those roadblocks that are keeping us from getting our treatments. Drug utilization review board or what we call the DUR board. Um, they monitor how prescription drugs are used in Medicaid and then the pharmacy and therapeutics or the P and T committee, um, decides what drugs go on the Medicaid formulary. So now that we sort of level set it, all, all the fun acronyms and, and the definitions, I want to say, I mean, Connecticut, you guys are, you guys are headed in the right direction. You are a state for other states to look up to, that's for sure. So for those legislators that are on the call today, I want to say thank you. Um, but I also want to say, don't give up. Um, there's always room for improvement. So, uh, Connecticut has passed a co-pay accumulator ban, which is amazing. So those do count towards a patient's deductible. Um, you pass wonderful prior authorization reform, um, you know, putting some more timelines and guardrails so, so patients can get their treatments faster. You also have biomarker testing coverage, which is so great. Not many states have that. Um, and you have her for both Medicaid and pri- private insurance, which I also love. Um, the P and T committee, uh, you do have one patient that serves on the committee. You don't have any patient on the DUR board though. So what I'd really love to see is that, that these boards, the DUR board or the P and T committee really turn to the ARDA in your expertise when they're looking at these drugs on the Medicaid formularies. And whether that's done through legislation or that's done through a regulation, I think that should be an automatic trigger that the ARDA is involved in these boards in some way. Um, some emerging things, uh, you know, DMD was brought up, uh, at the beginning of the call and, and, um, you know, you are doing great, you are RUSP aligned, but as, as everyone mentioned at the beginning of the call, there are other treat, uh, conditions like MLD, DMD, Pompe, Gauché, Fabry, Krabbe, um, that all are screened in other states that could be screened in Connecticut. So that's where Rare and Ready can really help. You know, we're here as partners for you at the ARDA. Um, so we're here to help. So you know, if there's legislation or we want, need to get that DMD legislation through, please turn to Rare and Ready. We're happy to help and, you know, motivate and activate our 110 organizations. Um, rapid whole genome sequencing, um, you do have Medicaid coverage, but not coverage for private plans. Um, so it'd be really great to see some sort of legislation where there's coverage for the private plans and rapid whole genome sequencing. Um, no out of network legislation right now, so it'd be great to see some out of network coverage for our rare disease folks. Um, and then when it comes to Medicaid, there are some states that do have some utilization criteria around Medicaid when there is an FDA approved treatment. So some states put guardrails around that. So you have, once a treatment is approved by the FDA, Medicaid has a certain time to review it and then a certain time to decide, you know, whether it goes on the formulary. So it would be really great down the road, um, you know, if we could see some guardrails around Medicaid formularies, um, and utilization criteria. So as I said, Connecticut, you really are, you, you know, you're doing it, the ARDA, you guys are doing what great things. Um, always room for improvement and that's really what here Rare and Ready is here to do. Now Leslie mentioned to me that this group knows a lot about PDABs. You've heard about PDABs, so I don't want to reiterate information you've already heard. But T, PDABs is, uh, defeating PDAB legislation is really a number one priority for us at Rare and Ready. When we started in 22, it was something that we immediately started working on. To me, I wanted to just give you this slide to give you a nice overview of what's going on. In the states, nine states with currently established PDABs, four of those nine states want to expand it. Um, and expand it so it's also with, uh, private insurance plans, just not state run insurance plans. And then we expect 13 states, including Connecticut, to have some PDAB legislation next year. Um, so we are keeping our eye out for that. What I love about this slide, um, is New Hampshire once had an established PDAB, saw that it wasn't working and recently, uh, eliminated it through the budget process. So, um, there is hope. If there is already established PDAB, that gives us hope here at Rare and Ready that perhaps we can work with legislators to get rid of those established PDABs. Because as we know, PDABs, although they were under, you know, all, um, they were introduced with the best of intentions. Um, they're not really serving patients. They do not lower copayments, they do not reduce premiums. And really we're finding that, that they are restricting access, um, to, to certain treatments. So the crazy thing is of the nine states that have these established PDABs, they've already spent $15 million just in admin and other costs and patients haven't seen a dime in savings. So, you know, if you're a legislator on this call and you're looking at these numbers, the math doesn't add up. They're spending more than they're saving for the state. So really, um, PDAB legislation is not what they had hoped it could be. Um, and you know, as the folks from BNI mentioned and others on the call, Connecticut really depends on your life science companies. Um, you are a state that welcomes research and development. You welcome innovation. Um, you have grown employment, you have a high wage, um, for your, for your life science, uh, workers compared to private sector workers. And you've brought in over 3.4 billion in funding since 2019. So to me, it's really a no brainer, like Connecticut is all about innovation and PDAB only kills innovation. So you know, for those on the call who are sort of on the fence about PDABs, I hope this really hits home that, you know, these PDABs are only going to hurt, um, Connecticut's, uh, bottom line economy. And, and it's going to hurt those life science companies that, you know, have their home in Connecticut. So the last thing I want to talk to you about today really is, um, what you can do. Um, and, and as an ARDA, I certainly understand you have certain limitations, um, in, in how you advocate. You, you don't want it to be lobbying, you're kind of walking this tight rope, but you can still tell your story. You can still lead with facts and, and lived experience without it being a lobbying. It can be education to these policymakers, um, and it can be just sharing your story. You can also, you know, count on Rare and Ready to help, um, share these experiences if you feel uncomfortable sharing them because you feel like it's more of a lobbying effort. So I just encourage you as members of ARDA. I just encourage you as members of R D X, we count on you. The rare disease community looks to you. To really guide the policymakers in the state. And and we ask you to do that. We ask you to really reiterate to them. When a policy has a negative impact on the rare disease community. Because as you all know, unless rare disease touches your life, you really have. No idea what families and patients go through. So that's up to us all. To make sure that we're portraying those real life lived experiences. So. I ask you to continue to, you know, speak with your policymakers. And stand up for the rare disease community in Connecticut. There's my contact information. You can always check us out at our website, rareandready.org. But again, I really appreciate the invite today to talk to you and I'm open to any questions that you have either now or after the meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you, Carrie, so much for joining to share in that wonderful presentation. I get to say from my perspective. You know, you certainly hit on so many points that we we discuss in the R D A C that we think are essential. For our patients and the the P D A topic has been one that we've discussed extensively. And in particular, because we feel there's there's particular risk to the rare disease patients. With the P D A B's or said that could be, these are generally atypical sort of therapies, atypical approaches. And and they can easily slide through the cracks, we feel. With something with with the setup like this, a topic that we've discussed extensively.
We have, and we have been effective discussing it last year when they introduced legislation. To have a semi P D A. They added rare disease position to that. So we're making inroads on it, but we have successfully fought it in the past few years. Could you send us information on the P D A B in New Hampshire?
Yeah, absolutely. Would love to.
Appreciate that because it would definitely help us in our, you know, discussions with members of the C G A. They like to see what happens in other states, especially one that's on the smaller side like we are.
Right, exactly. Yeah, you bet. Please use Rare and Ready as a resource. We are always here for you, whatever you need. We're all about education and resources.
We will definitely.
We definitely will, Carrie. Thanks so much.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks for the invite. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Questions before you run. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Dan, we we solved the problems or?
I got bumped out, but I can take huge left out.
Okay, so how about we move on to?
You bumped out of the meeting somehow.
It wasn't me. Move on to to Dan Donovan. Dan and you have been instrumental in working on some of the subcommittees for the Rare Disease Advisory Council. From Rare Disease Solutions.
Let you say your request to share.
But that comes through Amelia, do you see the?
Give me one second. Which is the laptop that's looking to share?
That's me.
It's the one, I know, but what does your name say on here? Sorry.
It's a Hugh Bartlett.
H Bartlett.
Okay, perfect. Try now.
There we go. Okay. So several years ago, some colleagues and I had a hunch. And the hunch was that rare diseases were underrepresented in the medical literature database. We've been in, we have a company called Rare Life Solutions. We work with pharma and biotech companies to help them. Develop and commercialize drugs for rare diseases. One of our specialties is medical publications. I've been in medical publications for thirty years. So rather than just rely on that hunch, we thought we would do some research. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go over these numbers with you guys. You guys know some of these numbers, but keep them in mind. As as I go through here and because it becomes pretty important and pretty telling. When you'll see the results that we had when we when we did this research and published it quite recently. Why did we think it was important to do this research? Because we know that when physicians go through training. They learn about four hundred different diseases. So that bullet point that I had on that chart back there, there is between seven thousand and ten thousand rare diseases. So we really can't expect physicians. To identify these rare diseases. We know parents know, right? The parents know there's something wrong. And it's really important that both physicians and parents. Academia, payers, they all have access to information on these rare diseases. So they can make informed decisions. So we did some research. Our primary goal was to systematically assess the prevalence of articles related to rare disease. In the dimensions database, the dimensions database is maintained by a company. Called Digital Sciences out of the UK. It is more robust than PubMed, so it captures a lot of stuff. Our secondary objectives were to see, we'll check out the access. Who can, who can access these these articles that are so important? Are they hidden behind paywalls, which is not a good thing? What about the inclusion of PACs? And I'll say, we we call PACs patients advocates and caregivers. What about the inclusions of PACs in authorship, in acknowledgement, in clinical trial development, identifying endpoints? And also what about the extensions to social media? Social media has become really important and rare. It's a way that a lot of rare people share. So we published the second iteration of our paper in May of this year. So this is pretty recent. And the authors are Tara is from Pfizer, Michael Taylor is from Digital Sciences. Paula Schmidt is a patient that I've come to know over the the sort of last decade or so and amyloidosis. And then Mukin and I are on the Rare Life team. So we put together industry, we put together agency, we put together payers to really do this research. And this is what we found. So I want to point out here that twenty twenty four and twenty five. That's not twenty percent, twenty four percent and twenty five percent. That twenty five is a quarter of one percent. So a quarter of one percent of the medical literature database is devoted to rare diseases. Right? That's a, that's an incredibly small amount. To put that into perspective, about three percent of the medical literature database is devoted to diabetes alone. That's ten times seven to ten thousand rare diseases. So our hunch was proven to be a heck of a lot more correct than we thought. There is really a paucity. Of of rare disease medical research shared. In the medical literature database and it causes a great concern. Let me, so we dove a little bit deeper and I'm gonna, I just want to point out, you guys don't have to look at these numbers, they're kind of small up on the screen. If you look at the big bar on the left in black, those are recent articles. So those are typically. Clinical trial papers that are shared in medical literature. So that's what we would expect. But I jumped way down to the bar. Second from the right in each one of these time periods. These are plain language summary and plain language summary publications. A fraction of a fraction, right? So why are those important? Because those are the types of publications that our communities can can understand. These are, take these complicated clinical papers and break them down. Into questions and answers and graphics. Make this information so much more digestible to the rare community. We think that's important. We also look at the publications and say, well, rare disease publications are different than than publications for. broader diseases like atherosclerosis or hypertension or the aforementioned diabetes. And there are a lot of different types of papers that should be published in rare. Things like body map publications, which allow us to see where these rare diseases are impacting the body. Because typically it's not just one point. It's, it's most a systemic. Impact of these rare diseases. Things like the glass child, if you're not aware of the glass child, that term glass child, these are the kids. These are the other kids of families that have a child with a rare disease that often looked, they feel like they're looked through. Because the parents are focused so much on that child with rare disease, it takes so much time. That the other kids look, they they feel like they're forgotten. So that's why this glass child. Term has come about. We also look at things like registries. There are a lot of registries out there. These are pools of valuable information that almost never get published. They're owned by academic centers, they're owned by five oh one C three academic advocacy organizations. Oftentimes, these fantastic pools of of data are just not published. They sit there. So this is a way that we can contribute to the medical literature database. By by taking look at these registries and seeing what else can we publish here? There are lots of different things that we can do. In rare, that's different and important to boost. The the amount of publications in rare diseases in that medical literature database that I've talked so much about. What about the contribution of patient advocates and caregivers, the PAC? We think it's super important because when we look at the PAC on the right side of this slide. We look at all the roles that the PAC play in rare disease. From community builders to FDA advisors to trialists to helping researchers design endpoints of political trials. They're the backbone. They're the market shapers in rare disease. But if you look at the left, you can see how often they're contributing to the medical literature database. So. PAC contributions in terms of authors and being acknowledged on these papers, less than three percent. Of the papers that are published. What is more important than a parent's observations? In the discussion of a clinical manuscript than, well than that, than their observation so they can make it meaningful. To to the other parents out there and the other patients out there. So less than three percent are are considered authors or contributors. And even less than that, that unfortunately of these trials actually have patient reported outcomes or quality of life. Parts of trial. And to me, that's just a, it's a sin. It, we need to do better as an industry. We need to do better in academia. We need to do better overall and including the PAC and their opinions. In in these papers. This is the silver lining in my presentation. Because I've been a little bit doom and gloom so far. So this is a silver lining in my publication. When we first looked at this and we looked at two thousand nine to two thousand and thirteen, about thirty five percent. Of of these manuscripts were available. In open access. So most of it was sitting behind paywalls and that's unfair. Right? Because when you're a rare family and you've got. Limited resources that are being consumed, rapidly consumed by care. To to find a paper that you really want to read. And then find out that it's sitting behind a paywall and you gotta pay eighty bucks or a hundred twenty bucks or whatever it is just to access that paper. That's unfair. So I'm really happy to see how this is flip flop between two thousand nine and now between in twenty twenty three. So now. About sixty five, closing in on seventy percent of these papers are available in open in open access. So why in in as they should be? I'd like to, I'd love to see that approach a hundred percent. I know some companies, I don't know about B I, but I do know some companies have a mandate now. That these papers have to be made available in open access. So that's a wonderful thing. And and it makes sense too, because if you look at the stats that I have there on the right in the purple box. Open access papers are downloaded four times more than papers behind paywalls. They're cited one and a half times more than papers that sit behind paywalls and you can see the rest of it. So. Ten years ago, when I started Real Life Solutions, we became, we we got in our soapbox about open access and said, this is where we need to go. With with this information for the rare communities. It's gotta be an open access. What about social media sharing? You can see when we first looked at this, social media sharing was pretty limited. Up to about seventeen percent. Of social media, social media activity in all medical and then to the right of that bar, the diamond box, social media activity in rare diseases. In the next period, it jumped up to about forty percent for both and that was great. I was expecting in this most recent paper. We were gonna see another jump. I was hopeful. We were gonna see another jump and maybe get that up to that seventy percent mark. Just like you, just like the open access, but for some reason it didn't move. It stayed at that same spot. And the reason why we think this is important is because so many rare families. Share information in social media, whether it's YouTube or Facebook or Instagram. That's where it happens and that's where this important information gets to these these people who need it the most. So I was surprised at that. Maybe when we do this again in five years, that that'll change. Or maybe the 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 suspicion that we had, maybe there's a saturation point. Maybe forty percent is the saturation point for what people, for what's gonna be shared in social media. We really don't know. We don't have an explanation for that. I was hoping to see it jump. So why is this important? Because silence in print can sometimes mean silence in care. If it's not there and physicians don't see it and payers don't see it. And families don't see it, then we can't progress, right? We can't extend learning. We can't take it from there. So silence is just not a solution. And and it's our feeling and when we work with our clients, we talk about amplifying these rare experience. And tries to try to close that gap any way we can. Create a social media plan with your publications. It's important. It's it's touchy. Sometimes you have a little challenge with the legal teams. But there are ways to do it and there are ways to do it smart and there are ways to do it to benefit the communities and that's the most important thing. So my only, my only request to everybody here, whether you're academia or your industry or your advocacy. Is is commitment. We all have to make the commitment to share this information as broadly as we can. So with that, that was my quick six or seven slide presentation.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Dan, for the great presentation and for all the work you're doing at Rare Life. Solutions, a lot resonated with me in in the presentation. You know, as a scientist, we're going to the literature and you're just confronted by this paucity, scarcity a lot of times that that's really kind of there. And I can't imagine. Sitting on the other side of it from the patient perspective and and not being able to to access that. And it's the way that we make connections in the in the the network, you know, that we we see somebody publishing in that area, then we follow it and it has to be. Accessible. And also a another piece to thank both you and Hugh in terms of your contributions to the R D A C and the subcommittees. It's an important topic, I think, for people who are online, who are passionate about. Helping rare disease patients in the community that outside the standing R D A C, we do have subcommittees. Engage in the community and we're always looking for people like yourselves who, you know, are stepping up. You know, really driving things forward to to help rare disease patients. So I applaud you both also for your for your engagement there. And and we're always looking for similar like minded, passionate colleagues. Any questions for Dan? Great. Thanks so much. Really appreciate it. How about we move on? Jody, Caitlin from Bio C T. I see that you've joined us perhaps from a hotel lobby someplace. So Jody, if you can hear us.
I hear you. I see you. Can you hear and see me?
We can indeed. Thanks for taking the time.
Okay, great. Sure. So sorry, I thought I would be in the car, so I'm just gonna give a verbal update and it's kind of apropos. I go after Dan Donovan because. He and I, what have we worked together like twenty five years ago? Pfizer, so wonderful partner and happy to, you know. See you here and be able to go after you. So I appreciate the opportunity for those who don't know me or don't know Bio C T. Just gonna take a minute to introduce the organization and talk about what we're doing in the rare disease space in particular. So Bio C T is the life sciences trade organization for the state of Connecticut. We're a not for profit organization comprised of about three hundred member organizations. So for instance. Behringer might be a member organization, one of those three hundred. We then become the voice of those three hundred organizations. And then I try and crystallize what we do as the four Ps. So first and foremost is policy. I want to get before you all today to talk a bit about that. But we have a very active government affairs subcommittee made up of either companies in the state. Or with a vested interest in the state of Connecticut. So you'll see companies such as B M S. AbbVie, Novartis, Merck, Regeneron. That want to make sure that patients in the state of Connecticut have access to their medicines. So we do quite a bit on the policy front. We are currently drafting our twenty twenty six legislative agenda. I've been at Bio C T for two and a half years. I come as a patient officer for Pfizer rare diseases from the cell and gene therapy. From the rare disease space. I myself am a rare disease patient, so I'm not supposed to have favorite children, but. My background is definitely cell and gene therapy and the rare disease space. So. We have partnered on initiatives such as getting genomic sequencing covered last year, biomarker testing this year. And it's very important that we work hand in glove to make sure that we're able to amplify. One another's legislative priorities and potentially, you know, go lobby together on issues where we are co-joined. To really amplify our voice and power and get things done in the state of Connecticut. The second P is around people. So we do everything from middle school mentoring and ensuring careers in life sciences. I'm actually in Bristol at an award for female innovator of the year. We do quite a bit with underrepresented populations. We also convene by function. We also convene by function, by topic, and by region, and I'm gonna circle back to our events. The third P I call promotion. We try and promote different organizations that are members of BioCT. And we do give patient advocacy groups free membership to BioCT, so I just wanna put that plug out there. Um and then we also promote the state and different regions around the state. And the last P is places. So we own and operate incubator spaces, so shared lab spaces around the state of Connecticut, or we co-manage them. And for those who may have seen the news two weeks ago, um we were one of the recipients of the first Innovation Cluster Award that Governor Lamont announced. So that was fifty million dollars. That goes to New Haven. BioCT is fortunately gonna be a recipient of three million dollars of that funding to really grow workforce, um training, mentorship, development. So we're really excited, you know, to keep building and expanding on that. So I just wanted to take a moment to circle back on our upcoming events, and I have armed Craig with a lot of attachments and he could send out as minutes. You have registration links and anything and everything that you may need or wish for and my contact information too. But our next big event, we are co-hosting Yale Pitch Fest with BioCT's holiday party. So that is December fourth, and that's at one oh one college in New Haven, downtown New Haven. It's our biggest event. Um we do really well when we co-host events with organizations such as Yale, because you get folks flying in from all over the world, really looking at the startups spinning out of Yale, investors, uh a lot of legislators, and then it's a nice event breaking off into our holiday gala. Very excited about our legislative breakfast. I have shared Craig a draft agenda that you could send out. I call it BioCT's most important two hours of the year. This is where we get legislators in the room, um and we really inform them right at the beginning of session. The focus this year is going to be how Connecticut can win amongst federal headwinds. We have a lot of luminaries from DC. We have our federal legislators. We have the governor, the commissioner, the attorney general. Um you will see a whole host of legislators, you know, speaking, attending. So I really, really encourage attendance um to that event to be heard. Um and what we try and do is make sure we shape our legislative agenda for twenty twenty-six before that event. And then we hand it out and make sure we arm all the legislators in the state. It's just a really important event, and we're getting pulled into like the broadest compendium of topics to lobby on. It's not just around healthcare, but things like H one B visas, tariffs, expanding Tweed Airport, you know, anything and everything that supports residents and patients in the state of Connecticut, but also industry to grow here. So it it's um, you know, that that's our biggest lift. Then I'm very proud to share that we're doing our rare disease summit again back at Jackson Labs in partnership with them. And that's March seventeenth, and I have armed Craig also with a an a draft agenda for that, a registration link. What we did last year is we had a patient um pavilion. So patient advocacy groups can have a table for free, thanks to the support of our industry partners. Um so I encourage also folks, you know, on this call who are interested in having, you know, a table at that event or registering for that event, you will be armed with all of that as well after today. So I just wanna pause and see if there's any questions or comments.
Awesome. Thank you so much, uh Jody, for the the great overview, the fantastic work that you're doing. Congratulations also in terms of the funding that you've recently received to expand the important work that you're already doing. Uh very well uh deserved. Any questions for for Jody?
Jody, I I was fortunate enough to attend your legislative breakfast last year and the the forum or the symposium at the summit at uh Jackson Labs. I would encourage all ARDAK members to attend it. It's important that we're there, that we're visible. And that we, especially at the breakfast, we have an opportunity to talk to all the businesses in the state and to all the legislators. So it's important that we get out there and get our priorities out there as well. So I would just encourage all of you to consider that.
Thank you, Leslie, so much for the shout-out. We were really happy that last year the governor used our legislative uh breakfast as a press conference to announce the ninety percent R and D tax credit. I was joking this year that we're waiting for another big such press conference. Yeah, and if anyone has an issue, you know, where ticket prices are are a limitation, please reach out to me directly, jaygillen@bioct.org, and Craig hopefully will share all the attachments and my contact information, but grateful for all your partnership and support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jody. We'll absolutely distribute the all that uh rich material following to me. Thank you so much. Okay, we're getting close to time. I would like to uh now move on and introduce a colleague from Borger Ingelheim. A scientist, I'm a nerd, so we have to bring some science in here, but within the context of partnership. And it's within that context, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Dr. uh Priyam Patel, from the uh Spatial Biology Lab here. And he's gonna walk us through quickly, hopefully, um a few, a few slides about what this technology can offer us and how we're partnering in the state to really, and and beyond that as well, to to focus on trying to develop um insights for rare disease patients. Are you able to uh join the?
You have the slideshow because I'm locked into access.
I should have just given you permission.
I can pull it up too.
Any luck? This is for Dr. Patel?
Yeah, yeah.
I gave you co-host permissions. You should be able to share from that, from that account.
Here, let me, let me pull them up. Amelia, can you give me um, or I think perhaps I can um, if you do it myself, but um.
The computer that has the owl also has permission to share, and then which computer is yours, Craig? Oh, here, I see it. I got you.
Okay.
I think they all have permission.
Okay, Priyam, take it away.
All right, so I want to thank everybody to uh giving me opportunity to speak uh today. I'm a principal scientist in the immunology and respiratory diseases department. And I want to discuss today about how we are using spatial biology to uh characterize rare diseases uh and contribute to drug discovery. So, next slide. Um so what is spatial biology? Um if you look at the right-hand side of that uh slide, in order to do a holistic characterization of disease state, we really have to understand combination of cells that are occurring in a particular spatial pathology at a particular time along the disease progression. So in order to do all of these, you need two critical pieces of data. You need to uh be able to characterize single cells, and you need to retain spatial context. However, historically, we have missed these two pieces of data in one uh place. So historically, we have had patient tissue, and if you follow the line in the bottom, we had the ability to dissociate the tissue and make kind of a smoothie kind of cell suspension where you can study broad uh alterations, but you cannot really understand contribution of single cell to the disease progression. These technologies were uh succeeded by single cellomics, where now uh as you see in the fruits, you are able to uh separate out single cells and really study uh their uh um changes and alterations during disease state. But again, we're missing that critical piece where we don't know how they come together in a spatial context and influence each other's behavior to uh contribute to disease progression. On the other hand, molecular histopathology has always focused on tissue context. So we start with a piece of tissue on a slide, uh but here the big limitation is we are not able to achieve high complexity, so uh we can only look at one or two to eight targets. These are very small number of targets, so we cannot really understand the disease context and all the different aspects of disease progression around it. Spatial biology has really allowed us to integrate these two, and we have the ability to acquire uh data of full transcriptome, which is nineteen thousand uh mRNA or more than hundred proteins at a single cell resolution for the very first time. And that is the, that is why we are so uh excited about these technologies. Now, uh go to the next slide, please. So if you really think about spatial data analysis, it's really not new. Pathologists have been uh reading these uh tissue sections with special stains like hemotoxine, eosin, uh as you see on uh extreme left uh on your slide. It's it's been done before. However, spatial biology has allowed us to gather more and more data from the same tissue section. So the amount of data, the complexity of data has exponentially increased, uh and the we have unprecedented opportunities and resolution to really understand the disease biology. However, this has also uh increased the burden and the complexity of this uh handling the data sets uh coming out of these technologies. So now we have to uh collaborate across bioinformatics, molecular biology, histopathology uh to really work together and uh process this data so we can extract disease-related insights. And not just uh internal collaboration, we are also actively pursuing uh collaboration in academic circles. So we can engage with uh subject matter experts to uh understand where is the critical and immediate need. So we uh put our efforts in in answering those those questions. So go to the next slide. I will walk you through two vignettes. Uh so one is on idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, as Craig mentioned. Uh this uh progressive uh fibrotic disease uh really um reduces the lung function. And uh from the time of diagnosis, only uh two or three years of uh survival. So it's very critical need in the field. Um we collaborated with uh University of Hanover, and uh we we performed a spatial multi-omic study and uh published this Science Advances paper. So uh we use single-cell RNA-seq and uh spatial transcriptomics and proteomics to characterize pathological niches present in the IPF patient tissues. So to show you slightly more data, uh on the panel A, uh we are focusing on the area of tissue that we have marked over here. With single-cell RNA-seq and bulk trans transcriptomics, we can uh predict the composition or uh what kind of cells might be present in that area. But in order to confirm that, uh we have to look at the uh spatial transcriptomics at a single cell resolution, which is in the panel C. So we have stained the tissue with uh markers that are specific to each of these cell populations to confirm yeah, these cells are there. And then we have further validated this to uh using spatial proteomics to really uh use multiple different technologies and use scientific rigor to assure ourselves that whatever we are seeing from these tissues is not artificial. It actually is uh ground truth. Um another collaboration, big collaboration that we are really excited about is systemic explorers. This is collaboration with uh Yale University. Here, uh we are uh generating a multi-omic dataset, so we can uh study these uh patients from all different perspectives. And if you go to the next slide, we have just uh started to uh and just run through the animations. So we have just started to uh uh, you know, stain these tissues and analyze these tissues. But as you can see from this example of uh systemic explorers' patient tissue, we have stained this tissue with thirty-eight protein marker panel, and we are identifying key cell types that are present within the uh tissue. So we can orient ourselves first, and then we can say, okay, uh in and around blood cells, do we see lymphocytes, myeloid cells? What are their contributions to the uh this uh pathogenesis of systemic explorers? So, all in all, we are really excited about the prospects of spatial biology and how it will contribute to fuel the next uh generation of drug discovery. And with that, I thank you for your attention.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Priyam, for for sharing the science and really highlighting, I think, a key component here. We had a Borger Yale Day, and you know, some of these types of interactions, we pull the community together. Do we have the opportunity to engage with a colleague like Dr. Hinchcliffe, and then find these opportunities for synergy, find the, you know, these catalysts that then spur innovation? And now you're really taking it forward and generating these profound insights into rare disease. So thank you, Priyam, very much for for sharing that, um these examples. Any questions for Priyank before we move on? Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh next on the list, I'm not sure if Shannon Belmont from GenDX is online. I think Shannon's gonna be here today, but Shannon, are you online? I think that is as a no. And then um the last speaker we have on the agenda for today, or the last two speakers, is Jennifer Banks. Jennifer, are you on on the line? Okay. Well, with that then, uh which is good, because we're close to full time. So I'll just pause right now and to see whether or not, since this is an opportunity for public comment, is there any other members of the public who would like to address um the ARDAK before we move to our last um speaker of the day, approaching full time?
Craig, can I just introduce myself?
Absolutely.
That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Erin, uh please take the state.
Good to be here. Erin Smith. I'm um the new uh Director of State Government Affairs for Borger Ingelheim. Recently, you know, I think I'm five months in. I'm still saying I'm new. Um but really happy to be here, and obviously you work very closely with Craig, but if anyone needs anything um from a perspective that I can help with, please feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to work with any and all of you. A lot of what was talked about today is stuff that I work with on a daily basis doing state government affairs. So I'm very happy to partner with all of you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Erin, for introducing yourself, and thanks for all the great work, supporting myself, and and we have so much overlap, there's so many important topics here on the ARDAK. Okay, with that then, uh we have one uh final speaker from from uh Borger Ingelheim. Amelia, I'll start to share my screen again, if that's okay. Um to to bring it home, I'd like to introduce uh Dr. Pratima Benzo Pacala, uh an esteemed colleague of mine, an executive director here in the Immunology and Respiratory Disease uh team, runs our drug discovery, our discovery sciences uh in vitro team. And is truly, I I think, a pioneer and a powerhouse in terms of the field of of drug discovery. And with that, I'd ask Pratima just to kind of come and close for a bit in terms of discussing a bit the challenges that we have across industry in terms of uh identifying therapies for for rare disease uh patients. So Pratima, if you would like to uh bring us home as the last speaker, let me just pull this up on the screen.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, everybody online as well as in the room for actually attending today and giving your your full attention to this really important top topic, which is very important for Borger uh finding novel transformative therapies for patients who are suffering from rare diseases. Borger um aims to be and continues to be a leader in this, in this field. And we want to continue with that, and I just wanted to highlight a little challenges that pharmaceutical industries like ourselves face. Um not layering on the rare disease question, also as as was highlighted before, not much publications there. So we do try uh to use novel technologies, like Priyam showed, to make a difference, to really understand the uh main pathways that are operative in these diseases. And in the, in the best of the worlds, from an idea to actually a marketed product, it takes anywhere from eleven to fifteen months. And it is only possible because of the perseverance and the passion of the scientists who drive despite multiple challenges, from early uh drug development to the pre-clinical clinical testing, and as you can imagine, there are multiple hurdles that we go through during uh the whole process. So you can imagine the burden that we have here um of bringing a really transformative uh therapy to the patients. It is even further amplified by the fact that our probability of success is very low. And uh it really, um it sometimes it brings up the question, why do you still work in this? You can only one out of five thousand uh molecules can become a drug. Well, we work in it because we are passionate about this. We are passionate about bringing these kind of therapies and novel medicines for our patients. It does take a substantial amount of investment. This is just an es estimate of about one. This is just an estimate of about a one billion euro to bring something uh, to a market. And the timeframe, as I mentioned, is also very um, important here. However, we are completely cognizant that the patients who suffer from rare diseases, they require, they need a therapy now, urgently, as as soon as possible. So we continue to work on it, and with your support, with your continued um, commitment and your passion that you bring from different fields together, I think we can all be really successful and realize our ambition to bring meaningful therapies for the patients with rare disease. So really wanna thank you all for your commitment. Thank you all for engagement. We need people from academia, from in other industry partners. We need patient advocates. We need legislators. We need everybody to come together. This is not something that only one group can can um, move the needle on. So again, thank you very much for all of you, for your commitment, and as I said.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Pratima, for those words to close out our meetings. But that, I'll turn over Leslie uh, to you and Michelle for any final remarks before we conclude.
Michelle, do you have any final remarks?
Um, I, you know, I'll say, Craig, thank you for um, hosting and uh, both for you and of course Craig and Leslie for setting up this amazing agenda. It was um, fantastic today, learned a lot of stuff um, to help us move forward. So I appreciate this, having such a robust community here to help us move these issues forward. So thank you to everybody who showed up and for you guys for uh, hosting and organizing.
Well, thank you. Again, I, actually, Michelle, thank you all for having us. Um, it's important that we get to know what your needs are. Um, industry is one of my great partners, and we really have to work with you to make sure that you're around, because we need drugs. With that, I'm going to, is, does anybody else have comments before I? Because we're right at the time. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Craig. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Uh, with that, I will close it. Um, I will send uh, an email around to all of you with legislative priorities from last year and stuff and an email that um, uh, Colleen sent to me about uh, the the awareness project that she's doing. I'll send that around later and ask for your thoughts. We haven't decided on a site yet for the December ninth meeting. I'm thinking we will probably hold it at the CGA, if that's okay with everybody. So think about that. Thank you all for attending.
Thanks so much, everybody. Amelia, thanks so much also for your coordination. Take care, everybody.
Yep. Thank you, everyone.